I'll order the meeting in the Greenwood Common Council on Wednesday, January the 17th. If you would, stand with me for the Fledge of Allegiance. After the pledge, please remain standing while we let him pray this evening by Mark Wiley, Executive Pastor, Redeemer Bible Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So just before I pray, I just a word to the council members. I just want to say thank you all for the way that you serve our city and this community. So you are appreciated. And so for our prayer tonight, I'm going to pray the words of Psalm 146, which I think are good reminders for us always, but as particular as we go into 2024, a presidential election year, I think it's super important we remind ourselves of these truths. So I'm going to pray Psalm 146 for us tonight. Let's pray. Praise the Lord, praise the Lord, oh my soul. I will praise the Lord as long as I live. I will sing praises to my God while I have my name. Put not your trust in princes, in a son of man, in whom there is no salvation. When his breath departs, he returns to the earth. On that very day, his plants perish. Blessed is he who help, is whose help is the God of Jacob, whose hope is in the Lord his God, who made heaven and earth, the sea and all that is in them, who keeps faith forever, who executes justice for the oppressed, who gives food to the hungry. The Lord sets the prisoner free. The Lord opens the eyes of the blind. The Lord lifts up those who are bowed down. The Lord loves the righteous. The Lord watches over the sojourners. He upholds the widow and the fatherless, but the way of the wicked he brings to ruin. The Lord will reign forever, your God, O Zion, to all generations. Praise the Lord. Father, I pray for your blessings upon these proceedings tonight. I pray for these members of this council that you would just give them wisdom and discernment, to give them clarity and conviction and unity. And Father, I just pray that you would encourage them in the work that they do and the work that you've called them to do. Because sometimes, Father, we can get so focused on things happening at the national level that we forget that this is where people's lives are impacted by the work that's done here. So I pray you would encourage them in the work they do. And you would bless these proceedings tonight, all for your glory. We pray this in the name of Jesus.
May we see this? Roll call. Here.
Gibson.
Here.
Hill.
Here.
Hopper.
Here.
Let's see.
Here.
Manship.
Here.
Lo.
Here.
Please.
We have a call. All of you should receive copies of the minutes of the regular meeting on January the 3rd. You have a motion from Mr. Lexi, second. Thank you. Mr. Hopper. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? You're an end and roll call in the minutes.
Hi.
Campbell.
Hi.
Gibson.
Hi.
Hill.
Hi.
Hopper.
Hi.
Lexi.
Hi.
Manship.
Hi.
Lo.
Hi.
Minutes are approved and go to eight to zero. Reports, Corporation Council.
Nothing to report.
Is anybody controlling?
Nothing.
Right, at this time, we have a court on the planning department, so Mr. Nelson.
Thanks, Mr. Campbell. Today, we have a conference of plan update. We're going to keep it brief. There'll be a longer version at our next Plan Commission meeting. That is this coming Monday, so Dave, you can be excited for that. But at this time, I'd like to invite Adam up from HWC, who is our partner in this project.
Thanks, Gabe. And thank you all for having me on the agenda this evening. As Gabe said, my name's Adam Peifer, Community Planner with HWC Engineering and the Project Manager for your ongoing Conference of Plan Updates. Couple new faces on the council since I was last here in August. So I would just say, if you have at any point in this process want to chat about your interest and vision for the community, certainly welcome and often to sit down with you. As Gabe said, just wanted to keep it brief this evening. Credit you a little update on where we are in the process and then some of our next steps coming up. So since I was last here in August of last year, we have conducted really our entire first round of engagement that included an in-person workshop in September at the library. I think we had over 100 people in attendance at that event. We were really happy with turnout participation there. That was also duplicated online with a survey and an interactive mapping tool. We closed that survey. We had over 250 responses. Always hope for a little more, so we will have another upcoming survey. They'll talk about in a second, but understanding we're trying to get that number up a little bit. So we'll be modifying some of our outreach and engagement efforts related to that. But we also conducted a high school specific survey. We had over 50 responses there. And then that interactive map that I mentioned received over 300 unique comments. And then there's also an ability to kind of thumbs up or thumbs down like or dislike comments other people have made. And there were over 2,000 of those kind of up or down votes to other community members' comments. We also held a number of targeted stakeholder meetings, 11 in total, that included over 75 participants, plus one of those was with the high school student government, which, Gabe, I don't remember how many it was, but it was at least 30 or 40 students. So that was exciting for us and those centered around topics like quality of life, housing, education, Old Town, public safety, utilities, transportation, and so on. Additionally, we were at the Greenwood Farmers Market and the High School football game against Whiteland. Those are more opportunities for input, but really, we see those more as just opportunities to get word out about the planning process and direct people to other online or in-person engagement events. So we took all of that information and started to synthesize some key themes and preliminary goals that we have organized around the city's four pillars, public safety, infrastructure, quality of life, and economic development. We've kind of added a fifth, land use, just because of how important a component that is in the Conference of Plan. In the interest of time, I won't get into all of those specific details, but something I think we talked about last time in you going into this was an important focus on reinvestment and redevelopment in established areas of the community, but then also understanding and using new growth areas to diversify employment and housing opportunities. We have drafted a future land use map and are working through refinements to that with the steering committee and Gabe and his team. And that will be shared publicly here shortly. And then, like I said, a series of goals and strategies organized around those other topics. Our next key step is what we call the Big Ideas Open House. And that's going to be coming up on February 29th. That will also be at the library. Right now, we're looking at like 4:30 to 6:30 for that. And again, that's organized as an open house, so people can come and go at their leisure. And at that meeting, we will be sharing, like I said, a future land use map, transportation, learning transportation recommendations, trail network, and then our series of goals and objectives as kind of a key touch point with the community to confirm the direction that we're on and give feedback on any course corrections or modifications that need to take place. In addition to that in-person meeting, we'll duplicate all of that content in an online survey and create a little video introduction kind of explanation of that. That will go on the project website as well. Again, the project website at plangreenwood.com. And we have updated that with steering committee materials and will be finalizing some internal reports related to a more detailed summary of all that engagement I was just talking about, as well as demographic and existing condition analysis and some mapping there. So those will be up shortly. And I think that's it for me. Again, just want to emphasize that next in-person meeting is coming up on February 29th and would certainly entertain any questions or again, if anyone wants to chat at any point during this process.
Any questions from Mr. Peifer at this time?
What'd you say to the website? It's plangreenwood.com.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All of you should have received copies of my report from the RDC. If there are any places letting you know, any other committee or board reports? All right, you're none, then this is an opportunity that the council sets aside for members of the public to address the council concerning items that are on tonight's agenda. So if you'd like to do so, please step forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record, or if you're online, please speak up. All right, hearing none, then moving on, ordinances and resolutions. Notice but tend to consider ordinance number 2401.
An ordinance to amend the official zoning map adopted by Reference and Unifying Development Ordinance Number 20-29, proposed rezoning of approximately 245.9100 acres of land located between State Road 135 and Honey Creek Road and north of Smoky Road Road sponsored by Leskey.
All right, you have a motion. Some motion of Mr. Hopper, second?
Second.
Goodbye, Ms. Gibson. Anybody wish to speak to this? The... Any questions from the council? Any special?
Yeah, why is nobody from Lennar here to go to the presentation?
Someone is here.
I didn't see that.
Yeah. Recommiting your thoughts back there?
I didn't want to interrupt you. Good evening, I'm Mr. President, Members of the Council. My name is Brian Tewey. I'm here on behalf of Lennar Homes. I have a presentation, if you'd like me to go through it, depending on the council. So while he's doing that, I dress 50 South Meridian. As I said, I'm here on behalf of Lennar Homes. And here with me tonight is Keith Lash, Ty Reinhardt, Tony Magado, and Taylor Navarro, all with the Lennar team, and thank you for hearing our case. This is, this is a good project. I know a little bit about it, but not, not going to have to speak on it. This is, mine is a, it's a blue first page, which I know that might have to be. All right, that'd be terrific, or I could just go through it with this. That'd be great.
Start, okay, start with that.
Okay, so, thank you, Members of the Council. This is a, it's a 245 acre site. It's on the east side of State Road 135, north of Smoky Road Road, and west of Honey Creek Road. It's owned by the Bowman family for 50 years. And most interesting, the Nelson Bowman, the patriarch passed away, I think in 2021. His daughter Jackie, his widow, Mrs. Bowman, will continue to reside on their property even as this property is developed. And the rezoning request is to rezone part of it, the north part of it, to residential RL, residential large, and then part of it to residential medium. So it's about 235 acres, but 20 of those acres are going to be, I think, have been purchased by Center Brook Schools. So it's going to be a neighborhood that's going to wrap around school, which would be up to 1,000 of the site. And the proposed developments will allow for about 380 homes to be developed by Lennar. I have, as I said, the surround, or I did say this, but the surrounding uses and tonies is probably familiar with, is on the west side of the site is 135, but the site doesn't go all the way to 135. And on the south side of the site is Smoky Road Road. It does have some frontage on Smoky Road Road. And then the east side of the site is Honey Creek Road. The north side of the site is surrounded by residential uses, commercial uses, and the Bowman family farm. The surrounding zonings include CL, commercial large, residential large to the north. West is residential large and commercial medium. To the south is residential large, residential medium. And then east is part two in Johnson County. On the slide, you'll see after I just went through the introductory slide, it's a photograph of the site. You get to about page four, it lays out the preliminary site plan for this site, which of course will have some practical implications for approval of the plaque. But the idea is, if the north end of the site, there would be residential medium of about 24 acres. In the center of the site will be the largest section of the summit, which is about 172 acres of residential large. And then the south end there, the south end of the site would be residential medium of about 48 acres. So again, roughly 245 acres, now less 20 for the school, so 225 acres. Overall density of the site is about 1.6 homes per acre. We can mix the RL and the RM together. The, before the Plan Commission, I think we had one person come to the hearing and they were concerned about making sure that the drain tiles at this site are not clogged or interrupted to affect the drainage on the west side of 135. Our engineer, Keith Lash, answered that, not believe he answered, so I believe he jumped and said that he responded in a way that he understood that they would be maintained, drainage would be maintained, this would not create a drainage problem to, for his property. Bring this up, I will show you pictures of these homes, that they range at price at the RL from about $500,000 to $600,000 today's dollars. Size from about 3,100 square feet to 3,500 square feet. That's on slide six, I think. One slide seven, there's some other elevations of RL homes. And again, these are just elevations of what they've been building around the Indianapolis community. On the RM property, there's about 72 acres of that, approximately 145 homes. So that's about two homes to the acre in the residential medium. And those homes are anticipated to cost between $400,000 and $500,000. The, and there's some photographs and elevations of renderings of those types of homes. The Plan Commission considered, something's happened here. The Plan Commission looked at some of the elements that you need to look at in terms of the rezoning. One of them being the comprehensive plan. It's kind of interesting, it has sort of a split comprehensive plan. The eastern side of it calls for single-family residential. That's what this development is supposed to be. And the western side of it calls for mixed use. And interestingly, they are not developing, area along 135 is not included in this rezoning. And so it would still be available for mixed use, should the, should the Bowmans want to rezone that property. But as I said, they're intending to stay along the property. Thank you very much. So this is the plan I was referring to earlier to get us oriented. What you might recall is State Road 135 would be over to your left as you're looking at that. And Honey Creek Road would be over to the right. And then north would be the top and south would be the bottom. As you can see, when I was trying to describe RL zoning, that makes up about 172 acres, the biggest section, about 60-some percent, I think, of the overall area. And then the RM, something is at the north end and the south end, as shown in the sort of 10 sections of that site plan. Those are the elevations of the RL homes that I was speaking of. As I mentioned, those are expected to be between a half million dollars to $600,000 or so. There's some other elevations of RL homes. Included in our presentation, your development standards, which Lennar will be in both the RL and the RM. Photographs and some renderings of the RM. I think where I was, Dave helped me out here, was that we looked at the comprehensive plan. You see the eastern side of the site that would be right. Zone, or contemplated to be single-family residential. And the western side is contemplated to be mixed use. We, at our hearing on October 23rd of the Plan Commission, we went through the statutory 90th act about whether the, it was compliant with the comprehensive plan. Staff's comment was they agreed with our statement that our part was compatible with the comprehensive plan. Staff also looked at what the current conditions and the character of the structures and uses in each district. And as the staff commented, the proposed development was aligned with the surrounding area. The next three criteria you looked at is what's the most desirable use of the land. And said that the mix of lot sizes and development will provide various housing options for the community, both RL lots and RM lots. And the staff commented, they generally agree with our statement. The staff said, although the project doesn't include non-residential uses, it does leave that portion along State Road 135, which I mentioned for non-residential uses. And they then looked at whether the conservation of property values would be accomplished. And the, we said that this would not negatively affect those property values throughout Greenwood, because it would increase the tax base considerably and is certainly compatible, we think, with existing residential uses and the 2012 Future Land Use Map. And I think the staff concluded that they agree with the petition or statement. And then the last one was to consider whether this was responsible for growth and development. If we found, or we suggested that it would allow for a residential development on a currently large agricultural site. At that time, we thought the school was going to come in there, but now we know that that's going to happen. That was compatible to have school where kids could walk to from a, from a neighborhood. And the staff agreed with the, with our statement that Future Land is not called for single-family. It makes use, and makes use developments in the area. And if this development left, it would do the law on 135, commercial for multiple family development. The staff recommended approval. They asked for six commitments and Lennar agreed to them all. We specifically requested that we could modify one of the commitments to show that the trails and connections throughout the community, the residential area, would be as approximately shown in the site plan, because Lennar has designed these trails so people could walk through and across the neighborhood and have connectivity. And the staff agreed with that. So to sort of wrap up the, maybe the one thing before I finish here, I think it's telling is distributed a letter from Jackie Bowman. And of course, her family's selling their property, so I expect her to be in favor of the rezoning. So a letter she wrote of January 17th, which I did not have at the Plan Commission meeting, she says in her last paragraph, wish you could be at the meeting and tell you this in person. Unfortunately, she had a prior commitment to not move. But she wanted to make sure, however, that the council would fully support Lennar's proposal, not just as sellers of the property, but as neighbors. So she confirmed to me that her and her mom are going to continue to live there on the, on the property while this is being developed. So I think that shows that in the body of her letter, they worked pretty carefully with Lennar to create a community that they still wanted to live next door to. And I think, I think this, that's evidence that this is a good problem. So in summary, the zoning will allow for residential development. I think that's compatible with the surrounding area. I think that will help the retail that's south of there, the program in that area in there, will be more rooftops if people live in that area. It's a mix of lot sizes between RL and RM. It will provide a variety of housing options. It will allow development of a long farm site, which will of course increase the assessed value of the property and re其次 tax base. We think it's compatible with the comprehensive plan recommendation. He reserves that real estate along State Road 135 for perhaps some different, even higher assessed value kind of development sometime in the future. We agreed in five out of six completely and one, just slight modification to the staff's requesting conditions. And staff recommended a favorable recommendation to the governor request. I believe our oath, Amos, at the Plan Commission, I think there was only eight members at that time. All of them missing, so I believe they told me eight or two, a favorable recommendation. So, sorry, took a little longer, but we'll try to answer any questions I have. I pretty appreciate you the favorable consideration.
Are there any questions for Mr. Tewey?
So I live in the neighborhood of Honey Creek, so I know how like traffic is already in my concern. And you know, so this is what I'm asking about with the traffic study. In the Smoky Road, where it kind of dog legs and Tracy, right across Honey Creek, right there, there's that like, you know, station, the power station and everything. Is there any thoughts about right of ways for like a roundabout going in there? Because trying to turn left to that area is very, very difficult. And also thinking about further on down the road, the incoming traffic that will take it all the way to Whiteland. Kind of thinking in that, that aspect of the increased traffic.
I don't know the answer to your questions. I do know there was a traffic study done and I suspect that Gabe or his team may have some more information about roadway improvements.
So that coming on the schools chump right there, right?
And I might not have the exact answer as well. I know that our city engineer had heard of the traffic study that came with this and we were supportive of this petition. Typically, a single developer would not fully construct a roundabout. Typically would not be feasible for that, but that's definitely something that we can look into. A lot of that will be analyzed during the site design as we work through their residential site plan. This right now, I know we have a lot of detail that was provided for us, but it is simply to get the overlaying zones and an idea of the conceptual plan. But if you don't mind, that's something I can follow up with you maybe afterwards, unless it, unless you need more time to consider.
No, it's fine to follow up afterward. I just want to think about it in the future, if you're going to put a school there. And I don't know if it's an elementary school, middle school, what it's going to be, but either way, parents going in and out of there. I know what school drop-off lines feel like and like trying, again, people trying to make less on the Honey Creek after that, it's going to be a hot mess.
Definitely, and so the last time we saw this was almost, it was a couple of months ago. And at that time, the school had not, to my knowledge, confirmed that they would be moving here. It was just vague, so that's definitely something that we will need to consider, especially when the school sets up their proposed plans, we'll want to look at that circulation.
Just for the record, I have already discussed with the mayor the possibility or the need for road improvements on Honey Creek, which includes multiple roundabouts, at least more than one. And so I know there's already talk along those lines. And I, it's my understanding that the Center Brook School system, if, if they put a school in, there would be an elementary school, so just. So you do, that's not definitive, but that's what I've heard.
That was our understanding also.
Yeah. All right, any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I said one, Brian, I think we talked, Lennar doesn't use vinyl at all in their product, so you've got no problems with the restriction on, with the prospect. So I amend, promote vinyl, use vinyl.
Motion by Mr. Hopper to amend ordinance twenty four oh one to prohibit the use of vinyl on any of the homes. Vinyl siding on the exterior. Second, a Mr. Lexi, any discussion on a motion to amend ordinance twenty four oh one? Hearing none, the roll call on the amendment to ordinance twenty four oh one.
Betra.
I.
Campbell.
I.
Gibson.
I.
Hill.
Hi.
Hopper.
Hi.
Lexi.
Hi.
Manship.
I.
Ordinance twenty four oh one is amended on a vote of eight to zero. Any further discussion on ordinance twenty four oh one as amended? Hearing none, the roll call, ordinance twenty four oh one.
I.
Gibson.
I.
You.
Hi.
Hopper.
Hi.
Lexi.
Hi.
Manship.
I.
Mom.
Hi.
Betra.
I.
Ordinance twenty four oh one as amended passes on a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. There's none under first reading, nothing under second reading, new business, introduction of new ordinance as resolutions, ordinance number twenty four oh two.
An ordinance approving parking fees for five twenty South Meridian Street parking garage is adopted by the Greenwood Board of Public Works and Safety. And amending Greenwood Municipal Code, Chapter Eight, Article Four, to establish parking fees, sponsored by Gibson and Earl.
Right. Yes, good evening. So as you know, we've got the parking garage constructed there and this is one of the final steps to get it ready to open. Got security cameras are in, all the equipment for access control is in. We have the contract signed tonight, it was approved tonight by Board of Works for the management by Denison. So our final step is to get the rates set, get them programmed into the system and then test drive it before we open up. Talking to Kevin, the hope is before the end of this month that we can get the rates approved, we could have that start putting cars in there.
All right, any questions for Mr. Wright? There is a request to suspend the rules through second reading tonight, so would you like to explain why that request?
As I mentioned, we really want to get it open and start using it and. Since everything else is now ready, that's, this is kind of the last step to getting us there, establishing that, that established.
So without this, you can't charge fees if you open it.
Right.
Yeah, so, yeah, all right. Any questions? Then I entertain a motion to suspend the rule.
Sorry, I have a question, Mike, if that's okay.
Oh, yes.
So normally at a parking garage, there's always, if you lost your ticket, you'll owe X amount. I've noticed we don't do that, how are we keeping people from parking a month there and coming back and saying, oh, I lost my ticket, so now I'm going to pay, I don't know, twenty five bucks for that. I would assume that, I know in, in the other parking garages, basically you lose your ticket, you pay the maximum. Charge, so it's going to be. Twenty five bucks, but it's. So in theory, I could park a car there for a year, say I lost my ticket, go back and pay twenty five bucks.
You have no, you have a no overnight parking ordinance at city lots, so the car would be towed if it was there overnight.
But how do you distinguish a guest that stay?
Yeah, that stay with the apartment folks from, I don't know that we're allowed, oh, we have to, that's a good question.
If it's a parking garage, they're paying a fee.
Okay, so if I pay for twenty four hours parking, I get there at seven o'clock at night, I'm going to be there until seven o'clock.
And the question maybe you have an ordinance that prohibits overnight parking.
No, if they're relaxing, they're not parking overnight as well.
Twenty four hours.
Yeah, I don't want, I want to hold this up so we can get going, but we need to come through this and figure out how we're going to keep people from just parking their cars. Then maybe there could be a soul of business on how do we track, you know, how long the car may be in there and figure out how to make sure that. If they're beyond a certain time, maybe it's just, we tell them.
Are there any questions? Be a walk maybe at the end of the, with the last person leaves that's working, I don't know if it. Get essentially.
Is it going to be automated or?
It's automated, but Denison will also have a person working on site during the week, basically kind of frustrate the week so that if there are issues, they've got somebody in there checking it, keeping up with main events. So that's part of their management.
Any other questions?
I have, I have a question, just a continuation of this thought. Greg. Denison is a parking garage management company that we are contracting to run this garage, right? Saying that correctly. So it would, it would, I would think that in their system, there would be some redundancy to locate cars that part that have checked in or a ticket that hasn't been cashed in. I don't know how they would locate that, I guess, but they would have, they would have to have some kind of redundancy in their system in their parking garage.
So we could solve it to get an idea and I could get back with you to have an idea of what their thoughts are on how that, how that can drive.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Miss Gibson.
I need for suspension of the rules through first reading.
Right, we're motion by Ms. Gibson to suspend the rules through first reading, do you have a second? We have a second, Ms. Veteran, any discussion on suspension? Hearing none, roll call then ordinance on suspension of the rules through first reading, ordinance twenty four oh one.
Gibson.
I.
Hill.
Hi.
Hopper.
Hi.
Lexi.
Hi.
Manship.
I.
Mom.
Hi.
Betra. I. Campbell.
All right. Rules are suspended through first reading on a vote of eight to zero, have a motion on first reading. Motion by Ms. Gibson, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hopper. Any discussion? Hearing none, then roll call, ordinance twenty, twenty four oh two. First reading.
Hill.
Hi.
Hopper.
Hi.
Lexi.
Hopper.
Manship. I. Mom.
Hi.
Betra.
I.
Campbell.
I.
Gibson.
I.
Ordinance twenty four oh two passes. First reading on a vote of eight to zero, have a motion on suspension through second reading. Motion by Ms. Gibson, second by Mr. Lexi, or? Any discussion on suspension through second reading? Hearing none, then roll call, or suspension rules through second reading, ordinance twenty four oh two.
Hopper.
Hi.
Lexi.
Hi.
Manship. I. I'm sorry. Mom.
Hi.
Betra. I. Campbell.
I.
Gibson. I. Hill.
I.
Rules are suspended through second reading, have a motion on second reading?
Sure.
Motion by Ms. Gibson, second. Second, second by Mr. Hopper, any discussion? Hearing none, then roll call, ordinance twenty four oh two, second reading.
Lexi.
Hi.
Manship. I. Mom.
Hi.
Betra. I. Campbell.
I.
Gibson. I. Hill.
Hi.
I. Ordinance twenty four oh two passes second reading on a vote of eight to zero. Thank you. Resolution twenty four oh one.
The resolution amending resolution number twenty one zero seven. A resolution declaring certain area within the city of Greenwood an economic revitalization area and qualifying certain real estate, real property. Improvements for tax abatement and setting the timing place for public hearing. This concerns GLA Properties Limited Liability Company, sponsored by Hopper.
Mr. Wright, I'm sorry, Mr. Stone.
Hey, it's okay. Hey, good evening, good to see everyone. So I just wanted to provide a quick update because this was, this has actually been on your agenda a couple of different times. This was, this abatement was actually originally approved a while back and there was. The sponsor of the rep here, those quick here, we have a presentation prepared for you all. Late last fall, they approached the city and proactively to.
Kind of magnetic personality. Counselor check that you have papers on the. Or just mute them all for now.
Tax abatement, sir.
If you're listening online, would you please? Are we?
Okay, so. So originally approved, last fall, they, they approached the city and practically let us know the building size was going to change. The kind of review committee had made a recommendation that that should come before the council. If you remember, that was, there was a meeting where that was denied. This is sort of a revisit to that to address, address some concerns, they have some information. And from the city's perspective and the review's perspective, I think that it's largely consistent with the original commitments, the investments, all those things are the same. I just want to focus it on the building size, so I'll turn it over to them, happy to answer any questions that we have.
Thank you, good evening, Alexis Souter, KSM Location Advisors, we are quite often a partner on the project test front with Spinel. So good season, familiar pieces, good season, new ones. So this, yeah, this is the original presentation, probably pulled up earlier. So thank you Adam for kind of teeing that up. Just to what he was saying, right, this is an abatement that was approved back in March of twenty twenty one. So even if you were on council in twenty twenty one, we've all slept a minute, hopefully more than just one since then. So I thought it would be a good idea to just kind of level set. Talk through what that original project was and how the difference in this last piece of, you know, what was at the time a four building speculative development abatement. How it's changed and, and again, to add his point, how investment numbers, all, all of the numbers that go into more calculation of, of an ROI. Still remain the same, if, if not better, but I'll, I'll dig into those weeds, so. So again, it just kind of provides some, a really quick overview of the history of this abatement. So that site plan here is what was originally for back in March of twenty twenty one, right? So the, it was a speculative development at the time, we didn't have any name users. And it was approved with this layout that you see on the site plan, so. Plans for build, what is shown is building number four at the time, approximated to be one hundred eighty two thousand square feet, ton, taking approximately nine acres. The SB one, the saving benefits that would have been associated with this abatement request would have included the investment for that, that building to be eight point five million dollars. As you guys know, but for those watching at home, anybody going back and reviewing minutes, that eight point five then has been what's pulled through statement of benefits as just the estimated investment. And then that's often, that's going to be the figure that's used to calculate the bait and savings, right? So the first three, the first three spec buildings, if you will. The layout and, and the size have changed over time since March twenty twenty one, but they were all done within the parameters that were put on each and each respective statement of benefits form. Spinel has been a long time partner, development partner with the city of Greenwood and so because the scope of. And again, which happens quite often with speculative development, the layouts have just kind of just changed, right? So you kind of have this last puzzle piece and because the, the spec of building number four changed enough. You know, Spinel, again, just being a, a long, long time partner with the city, you know, and us as, as their property tax, their property tax partner. Really value transparency, you guys should know what's, you know, being spec for that last, for that last parcel. So with transparency in mind and then again, as their property tax partner, we don't, we never want to run into any compliance issues, you know, we've been. We've been at enough council meetings where not necessarily Spinel, but another project, you know, it's missing the mark on that statement of benefits and. We just, we never want to put the city or, or Spinel, right, in that position. So we felt that it very much warranted coming back before you doing a formal amendment process to the original resolution from twenty twenty one. So that we can account for the changes and, and how this, you know, this remaining parcel is going to look. And we've included some information here, again, just attested into the longstanding partnership between Spinel and the city of Greenwood. As it relates to just this, that full industrial development back there, works still commerce center. There's been quite a bit of investment that Spinel has made, but you know, that has, they've come out of pocket for, have not asked the, the city to subsidize at all. Just to the tune of close to six million dollars in road. You know, constructing, widening, improving all of the roads back there in the park and certainly utility and another of the structural improvements have come along with the really large development back there. So to kind of stack, stack the twenty one, twenty twenty one project to the twenty twenty three project. This is, this is the revised site plan, right? So you kind of see how building one, two and three changed just marginally. But you could see, hopefully you can see on my site plan there. How that's changed in comparison to if I go back here, right? Kind of see what that original, that original spec development was going to look like. So again, kind of stacking those side by side, I, you know, we just tried to kind of compare. Hey, the last, the twenty twenty one project was nine acres, one hundred eighty two thousand square feet. You've got some pavement area there that would have been associated with that, with that spec. Now, here, here we sit in twenty twenty four, not twenty twenty three. That, that remaining, you know, land to be developed is going to account for close to forty three acres. You've got a primary building on that, on that lot to the tune of eighty seven, four ninety square feet. You've got a secondary structure on spec or not spec, you know, planned on that site and then you've got significantly more pavement area. So working with, working with the property director, director at KSM Location Advisors, working very closely with Adam. On how to kind of key in on what the estimated AV will be and I think that was really kind of the. When we came before you in November, December, end of last year, I think it was really kind of the AV that. That was really a question and if it's going to change that much, you know, what, what does that mean for, for the estimated assessed value? So using comps, again, working really close with Adam. We've been able to arrive at a total estimated AV, you'll see there kind of in that fast bullet of twelve point five five million. Again, that's, that's more than that eight point five that was originally expected would have been on that SB one back in twenty twenty one. So our request and really is that, yes, our estimated AV is coming in higher. There, we are not seeking any sort of additional incentive on and above that. Again, for like kind of getting into the weave on all things property tax abatement, because that eight point five is on the first page of the SB one, it effectively gets capped. When we go to file, see if one compliance filing needs, et cetera. So we are not seeking abatement on any AV that will come in above and beyond that eight point five. So the ask is really to, you know, kind of make this formal amendment, same abatement schedule as was approved back in twenty twenty one. Spinel, we've, we've worked with this city long enough, we've kind of devised this abatement schedule, which. Hopefully you will notice that years one through three are at eighty percent. If, if it is a standard abatement schedule, you're, you usually see a hundred percent in year one. We recognize that there's some value there, right, that we don't have a hundred percent abatement in year one, so. We, we carried that abatement schedule all the way through. So in terms of next steps, we really just wanted to take the time that, you know, maybe wasn't taken back in November, December, when, when the, when the first amendment was, was discussed. Make this presentation, introduce, kind of reintroduce it, answer any questions that you have. And then just work through the typical approval process to get the, to get the amendment approved.
Any questions? I have to say, I appreciate the work you, your company's put into addressing our concerns. Any questions at this point, comments?
So does the new proposal with a great terminal? Does that mean that more truck traffic will come through that area as opposed to what would have been there before? Is it would have just been a box with whatever widgets are inside the box?
I'm going to, I'm going to let Justin Olashik, the development manager, who's now is kind of addressed the, the truck traffic and what was better, yeah, before.
So again, Justin Olashik was Spinel Properties, representing the owner developer on this project. So we did update our traffic impact studies on part of our entitlements with the planning staff. Just so we knew what kind of impact this set user was going to have on what we had previously assumed and. It fell within what was initially assumed in the initial traffic study back in twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. As far as our, our best guess on a spec of the.
um, as far as our, our best guess on speculative basis at that time, what, what could be generated from the site. So, um, it would not be any, anything different than what was previously approved.
All right, any other questions?
Yeah, I just, I mean, well, less amused by the project as a whole than I would have been before. And I know we have a new assessor, but I still am not, I can't say that by confidence in them actually assessing it to what it's supposed to be assessed at, uh, will be done, but, uh, yeah. All right. What, uh, can you make any commitments if it comes to under the eight and a half million?
Any commitments?
Yeah.
I mean, um, I mean, obviously, the, the abatement benefit is going to be, I, it would be less because of that.
But we would also get less, so I.
Yeah, I think, so, just going to pull, sorry, just going to pull this back up. I mean, we, the comp property that we're, that we were using is eight hundred acres per way, and I mean, they're all, I work with our property director, property director all the time. I mean, that, it's almost an apples to apples comp. And I, I think Adam, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I think validated that. So again, I, I, I understand, I completely understand what you're saying from a, from the use and, you know, that it's, you know, you've got the paving out there, but I, to break it out, I mean, I, I guess I kind of glossed over it, between the land, the building, the paving, I mean, those are all, those are all held and arrived at, I mean, with comps and, you know, we, we're not messing with the SB one itself, but you, you've got, you've got the cost per foot for the land building and paving and to get it to that twelve point five, so.
Counsel's question is whether or not you would commit to that twelve million five hundred and fifty thousand five hundred dollar figure in the event that the assessor came in under that number.
I mean, I think you'd have to have, I, I think it'd be, it's the assessor, right? I don't know that we, I guess, how would you, how would we commit to the twelve?
Be a minimum payment, it'd be a minimum payment. We've done this on several.
So then to work on, work a pilot for just this last piece?
So, uh, I, I actually, there's two potential options. The one would be an agreement on a minimum assessed value. It's essentially an appeal for, so, uh, there's precedent for that. There's examples we can share that other Johnson County properties on it. The way it works is, y'all know there are appeal restrictions in the tax payment structure, the, the resolution now. This would essentially work to, um, any assessments lower than that are required to basically go to that number. Okay, so it's kind of a lesser, uh, lesser rate than we, secondly, the only other thing I would say is, uh, there are, I think, opportunities when you get to the compliance aspect of this, because we're still talking about an enabling statement of benefits. So at that point in time, you would have a fully assessed project that would be reported on the compliance form. That would provide you all an opportunity, basically each year, to, to sort of re, reevaluate this based on these commitments as well. But I would say either one of those would be opportunities.
All right. Anything else, Mr. Hopper? All right, any other questions or comments?
If, if I may, I, I'd like to just share a little bit more about the, the proposed tenant. So, um, it's a long-term partner of ours, uh, also a long-term partner in, in Greenwood. Again, with this being a, a build-to-seat user, we have the luxury of knowing, um, their employment numbers and just generally what the investment they're making on a, uh, a salary basis. So, um, these numbers are a little dated since they weren't required as, as far as this abatement goes, but this was April twenty-two, and actually the, the project has grown and scaled since this time. But they'll, they'll be providing a hundred and sixty-three jobs, average hourly salary of thirty dollars, um, average, uh, salary position of eighty-two thousand a year. Um, they're fully, um, benefited as far as their medical, medical coverage. It's a fifteen-year lease that they would be, uh, executing with us, so it's a long-term tenant. So in addition to the tax benefits, you're getting your full, full tax amount for five years. There's two, five years of extensions at the back end. Additionally, you're inserting a, a great amount of, um, of, uh, of money into the, the citizens of Greenwood because, quite frankly, this, it's higher, it, it's the tenant that you want here. You know, it's the one paying the high wages. It's more than you have gotten out of the, the building or even at a, a larger square footage. So, um, I just wanted to bring that up to the, the council's attention and, uh, just for the consideration.
All right, thank you very much. Any other comments or questions from the council? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. All right, next, Resolution twenty four oh two.
The resolution approving certain amendments to the East Side Economic Development Area purposes concerning Pulte, Del Webb Project, sponsored by Campbell and Hopper.
Adam, again, I, I'm here, really on behalf, the next, you'll be have the green redo of the commission. Just wanted to provide, I, I know this has been a well, both of these have been well documented projects. The next two both are under purchase agreements that both had received unanimous approval of the Greenwood Development Commission, in form of the declaratory resolutions, and then both received, uh, unanimous approval, uh, the Plan Commission, uh, order of fact that's ultimately be codified as part of these resolutions. The, this is not the final step in either creation of these allocation areas. The tentative date right now for the public hearing would be the March twelfth, redevelopment commission meeting, just at four thirty. We're preparing the final notices, the taxing fact statements for though that, and that would be where we would, uh, request any questions or comments overlapping taxing units to attend that public hearing, if they have any final questions. This is officially step three of a four-step process. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about, yeah, TIF. And then relative to, um, the Resolution twenty, uh, twenty four oh two, the representatives here from Pulte, if maybe there's to be any questions they have about their specific site plan.
Any questions for Mr. Stone at this time? All right. Resolution twenty four oh three.
The resolution approving certain amendments to the East Side Economic Development Area. This is for Indris and Hauser and the Unicorn Project, sponsored by Campbell and Hopper.
Ditto of what you just said, all right. Same thing.
Yes.
All right. All, all of Mr. Stone's comments on Resolution twenty four oh two, Resolution twenty four oh three. Any questions from the council? Hearing none, and moving on, miscellaneous business. Uh, this is the second opportunity that we allow the members of the public to address the council, this time concerning items that are not on tonight's agenda. So if you'd like to do so, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record. If you're online, please speak up. Hearing none, and moving on, council miscellaneous business. As you can see, we have a long list of conflict of interest. All of you should have received a copy of that, what we're going to do. Uh, since all of you have a copy, we're going to, uh, first of all, any questions or concerns about any of the conflicts of interest that you've received? Then what we'll do is we'll entertain a motion to accept all of these and then take a, a voice vote on those. And a copy of this list will be attached to the minutes of our meeting. So do I have a, any other, any comments or concerns, questions?
I would just say that, uh, I would abstain from mine. Otherwise, yeah.
Okay, we're going to do them all at once.
That's what I'm saying.
All right, so we, we will note that if you, if you are on this list and have a conflict of interest, that your vote to affirm it is for all but your own, or you're abstaining from your own. How's that sound?
Sounds good. That makes sense.
Yeah.
Sounds good. All right, I, do I have a motion to accept all of the conflicts of interest as presented? Certainly. Ms. Betron makes the motion. Have a second. Second by Mr. Lexie, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, likewise. They are approved unanimously except for the abstentions as noted. Any other miscellaneous business from the council? All right, any miscellaneous business from the corporation council?
No.
Controller, mayor's office. Your turn. Thank you, everyone.